You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
All right, being the top of the hour, we're going to call the zoning board of adjustment meeting for December 16th today to order. First of all, let's go ahead and do a work call.
Adam said he was going to do a work call.
Oh, yes, sorry. Brian Rutgers. Adam Moore.
Here.
Anna Karazinski.
Here.
Lisa Thorne.
Here.
James Ward.
Here.
Wayne Licklider. Pete Delaney.
Here.
All right. We do have a forum. All our regular members are here, so. All right, we have a forum, but we also have one member of the board who's not present, so as a result of that, we will seat Mr. Pete Delaney here for Brian Rutgers. Welcome. Okay. We'll read the agenda first. Right. Would you like to take the owner's, Adam?
I'll do it.
I'd like to do it. So first, we have the approval of the minutes for November 18th, 2024. Next, public hearings. First public hearing on the docket is ZBA 24-013, variance. Jake Chikani has requested this application for a variance to Section 5, Article B dot 1, to construct duplex in the business district. Property is at Tax Map 102, Lot 81. Lot is on the corner of Underwood Road and Lake Street. Second on the docket is ZBA 24-014, another variance. Jake Chikani has requested his application for a variance to Section 5, Article B dot 3, to construct duplex within the front side and rear setbacks and on a lot under 1 acre size. This is the same property as I just mentioned above. After that, we have other business, including zoning board meeting schedules for 2025. That needs approval. And after that, we have any other business which may be required and then adjourned.
Excellent, thank you. All right, looks like we also have minutes. Does anyone have any comments or additions or changes that they'd like to present in the minutes?
I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes from last meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion to accept the minutes and it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the minutes have been accepted. All right, and then regional impact vote. This is something that brings to the table if a application has the merit, rises to the merit of affecting the region. Does anyone have?
I move that we, that there is no regional impact in the judgment of the board.
All right, we have a motion and a second, so it's been.
Second by?
Pete.
Pete, you?
All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Looks like unanimous. Unanimous, so, okay, so we have our public hearings here. Adam, would you like to kick us off with the first on our agenda?
Absolutely.
Well, the second, actually. We did do the site visit today, so at 3:30.
Yeah.
And now we're on to the next variance.
First item is 24-013, variance. Jake Chikani, and do we have Jake here?
I'm over here.
There he is, there he is.
And again, this application is for a variance to Section 5, Article B dot 1, to construct a duplex in the business district. Subject property is at 102, Lot 81. Address is 14 Underwood Road.
Okay. Jake, typically, it's, his last name is?
Chikani.
Chikani, Mr. Chikani. Would you like to kind of give us a rundown? I know we saw at the site visit, the location and so forth, but typically, you know, applicants give a rundown of what they'd like to accomplish here.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm at a bit of a loss as it's kind of come to my attention that the site plan, the site plan that is included in that packet isn't really sufficient, nor does it follow a lot of driveway regulations. And I am, I guess I'm, I'm hoping the board would continue the application until next month, so that I can actually, so that I can put more time into the site plan and actually have a shot at this variance. Because as it is in your packet today, I don't think it's, doesn't seem like it has very, a very good chance of being approved. So I guess I'm, I'm asking the board for continuation.
Okay. Okay, so applicant has requested an extension on this application or moved to the next scheduled meeting. Is there any discussion on the board as to?
Just some background here. This is, January 20th is our next meeting. That is still within the 90-day period to make a decision as per RSA 674-338. And I can read that RSA if the board wishes. After that date is, it is outside the 90 days, but January 20th is still within the 90-day period to act.
Okay.
Recut.
That's just for background.
Background.
Beginning date?
The beginning date is November 1st, when he submitted, yeah.
Application is November 1st, okay.
Yep, so we would have until roughly February 1st, if that's exactly 90, but it's probably not.
And so our next scheduled meeting is the 14th, you said?
The 20th of January.
The 20th of January, okay.
I'm sorry, November, what was it, 20th, did you say?
November 1st.
The first, we see the application.
Yep.
Would it be in his best interest to withdraw on that recent head?
Or is that? We had talked about it. Well, so withdrawing has some downsides. One of the downsides is you don't recoup the cost of the application, so that's always a concern. I think at the core, it's a good application. It would be a better application with a good site plan. And so an extra month to get a site plan solidified would be a good application, but that's not really for me to speak about. So I think the, besides the site plan, it is a good application fundamentally. It's complete. It has all the required information. So it's up for the board to decide if another month for a good site plan is worthy, but again, we are within the 90-day period to act even at our next meeting, so I think it would be acceptable.
If, as I look at this, it's not going to change the need for a variance.
Correct, no.
There's no way that, that what he's proposing in terms of building size, whatever, would fit on the lot without asking for a variance, so that's.
The variance would stand, yeah, the variances would stand. The need for them would stand, yeah.
Both variances, right?
Exactly, yeah.
There's no way. Well, I can see, no, I can't see that.
Yeah, yeah, but both variances would, would stand, just it would be a new site plan. From what I gather, Jake, does that sound right?
Yeah, I mean, I think whoever was at the, whoever walked the property saw that there isn't really, yeah, there's no, there's no spot on the property. Eight, well, one of the variances, you know, is required for the duplex because it's not permitted use. And then the question of the setbacks, if you saw the site, there isn't a spot on the property that can conform to the, to those setbacks, front, rear, or side.
So my other question is, the first variance is asking for the right to build a duplex in the business district.
Correct.
And that's independent of the site plan, isn't it?
It is, yes.
So is that something that we could decide tonight? And if we did decide tonight one way or another, it would both encourage him or discourage him from coming back to the board. All I'm saying is, if we don't need the site, if he's talking about redoing the site plan and we don't need the site plan to decide the first variance, maybe we should consider the first variance and, and then if it's a positive result, continue it till the next meeting. I'm just saying, we're here, we don't, we're not going to get any more information about whether a duplex is appropriate here in the, in the business district. So I'm just, I'm just putting that out there.
Fair enough, fair. Any other thoughts on the board members here as to the request of the applicant?
I, I, I guess I'd rather be called, I don't know, what, what do you think? Do you think it's?
I think it would be reasonable to do the first one tonight if that's what the applicant wishes.
Well, my feeling is that, yeah, the, the first one is already hindered by the incompleteness of the second one. I mean, you're less likely to approve a duplex for some, for someone who has a, you know, a site plan that isn't complete or is presenting themselves to be involved by doing the site plan or something, so, you know, I, I guess it's not for me to decide, I don't know. But I think, I think you might have, you know, more rosy-alabana in the site plan.
Okay, so do you?
I would make a motion based on his, his request, which is certainly within reason to continue to next.
I'm sorry, you're, you're moving to?
I'm moving to, to move these, this application the way it stands with, you know, with the upgrades that he's requested.
A continuation?
To continuation to our.
And your, that's your motion?
Yes, my motion.
Okay.
All right, motion's been made.
Okay, I'll second that.
A second? Okay. All those in favor of Ann's motion, please say aye.
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 Hey.
Okay. All right, so the motion's been made to continue this application to our next scheduled meeting on January 20th, with the caveat that the site plan would be completed and so forth to your, to your needs. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Next month.
Thanks, Jake.
And?
So he has, can we associate on this or are we?
Well, I just, we can talk procedure real quick if you want.
Yeah, hugely. So he has to submit his modified site plan.
By the date the packet goes out.
Wasn't approved, does it hurt value, property value for the voters?
That's a, that would be something.
So what was your question, sir?
Would it affect the property value for the voters?
This is something that we can get into at the next public.
And for you, just for Beverly's record, could you state your name?
No, we're not at a public hearing right now.
Jerry Smith?
Jerry.
J E R Y?
Beverly.
J E R E M Y.
I'm sorry.
Jeremy Smith, J E R E M Y.
Okay, thank you.
Beverly, this isn't part of the public hearing.
No, oh, no.
Yeah, sir, if you can hold your comments until January 20th, we'll consider all comments then.
Can we, can we just say procedurally that the first, the first question we ask for a variance is whether the variance could be granted without being contrary to the public interest?
Yeah.
Which would fit things like property values.
Yeah. As I, please, I, I know it's a, I know it's kind of annoying to have to come to one meeting and then another meeting and now have to come into a third meeting. But I, I, your time is valuable and I appreciate you being here.
So now is just, they asked me about the question, was?
No, absolutely. It's just, it's, it's better that we just hold all questions until the public hearing. That way we just have it all captured in the minutes. And please feel free to send my office any type of comments or letters you, you may have concerns about, and I can bundle that into the packet as well.
Would I be correct that his, that the packet is on the website?
It is, yep.
So maybe you could give him information about that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because that way, you can actually go and download the checklist that we go by to answer the question you just asked.
And he does have an opportunity, you guys have an option to send me a letter in support of.
Jeremy. Oh, Jeremy, I thought you said Jeremy.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Thank you, we are interested in your comments.
Sometimes.
Okay. Well, this covers both these variances, right? I mean, we're, okay. And then, so other business?
You had some? Yeah, just the schedule for.
Didn't you want to read something else as well?
Oh, yes. I mainly just wanted to re-review RSA 674-33 for the purposes of this very application. I'm going to read it, and if you guys have any questions on it, we can forward all these questions to Cordell, our legal counsel. That way we're conducting these meetings in, in a legal manner going forward, which, not saying we haven't been, but I just want to keep it in that direction. So 674-33, specifically Section 8, upon receipt of any application for action pursuant to this section, the zoning board of adjustment shall begin formal consideration and shall approve or disapprove such application within 90 days of date of receipt. In this particular case, that was November 1st. Provided that the applicant may waive this requirement and consent to such extension as may be mutually agreeable to the board, which you guys mutually agreed on that extension to next meeting, so. If a zoning board of adjustment determines that it lacks sufficient information to make a final decision on an application and the applicant does not consent to an extension, the board may, in its discretion, deny the application without prejudice, in which case the applicant may submit a new application for some or substantially similar request for relief. So if you guys were to deny any application for lack of information, that would be without prejudice, meaning they could reapply for the same application. So just wanted, that section in the ordinance is very applicable to your jobs and, yeah, just figured I would read it. I want to try to do some training once in a while.
Adam, you know, I just want to be sure I understood it.
Yeah.
It seemed to say that if the applicant agreed, we could extend the period beyond 90, to 90 days.
Yes, yes, that is what it says, it has to be mutually agreed.
Mutually agreed.
Yep, so if you guys both come to an agreement, yeah.
Okay.
Might not always be for the applicant's best interest, but if you guys both feel like it's agreeable, then.
That has to be a joint decision.
Has to be a joint decision, exactly. Thank you. Hope you guys get some use out of this. If you guys want me to clear up any other RSA topics, I'm happy to do so. And if you guys want me to confer with Cordell on anything, I can do that as well.
Okay. So is there any other business on our agenda? I think you said something about potentially?
Last page of the packet.
So let's do the 2025 meeting schedule first. Last page of the packet, please. Looking ahead to 2025, I tried to take into account holidays. There are some things I could have missed. Just, I've been the only one looking at this, though, so I don't know. If I missed something, I probably won't catch it. So if you guys want a brief look over these dates, if they are acceptable to you, then we can go forward. And again, we can always change this. If these, if you guys find something wrong with these dates in the future, we can adjust them as needed.
Well, we have to do it a month ahead of time.
Yeah, exactly. So you better catch it a month ahead of time. And just a quick, I guess.
Are these are on the dates themselves?
Yeah, so the left column is the meeting date, the right column is the application deadline.
One, I got St. Patrick's Day here.
Which day is that?
Seventeenth.
March 17th. Not that that's a national holiday or all, but.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so it doesn't affect me at all, but, but January 20th is Martin Luther King.
Oh, are we, are we working on that?
And 17th is President's Day.
That's why I need someone else to look at these.
I'm fine with it, but I just wanted to point it out, I don't know, people go away on some of those.
If it wasn't on my calendar, sapping it off, I didn't.
Well, those are town meeting days, but those are town holidays, some of them.
I think you're right on at least.
They're town holidays, and the town is closed officially. I only remember Presidency Day because I know people take off for snowmobile weekends and stuff like that, so.
Is Martin Luther King Day a town holiday? I don't think we posted the town holidays.
January 20th is Martin Luther King inauguration.
That.
Like, again, I don't have a problem with it, but I'm just.
Isn't that a?
Point that out.
I'm not sure that's a holiday in New Hampshire.
I, it's hard to say, our calendars aren't updated for 2025.
Massachusetts it is, but not New Hampshire.
Wire rush.
Wire rush, exactly. You don't need to.
The only consideration, if I may, is that if you want someone to set up this meeting hall, you're asking someone to work on a day and they're supposed to be off if it's Martin Luther King Day and the town is officially closed. Because usually, Anne, Anne, somebody from the Anne Biddall, usually sets up this setup. And it has to be set up because there may be a party going on the previous Saturday, so asking her to come in on Monday when it's a holiday and set it up for the ZBA meeting might be a little bit much, but that's up to you guys.
And from a point order, I mean, on national holidays and so forth, or, or holidays that the city takes, can we have meetings? I'm just asking the question, I've never.
I don't believe.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
The town is officially closed.
We're closed, we're closed.
Exactly.
Including exterior meetings, yeah, okay.
Exactly.
I tried to have a fire department meeting on Veterans Day, it just was too much, so we gave it up because I didn't get anybody to tell me I couldn't, but it was very much discouraged.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Town Hall was closed on Martin Luther King Day last year, so I think it's safe to assume that it will be closed this year as well.
They haven't given you an employee scheduling up for 2025 holidays?
I don't take health benefits, so I don't pay attention to it well enough.
So is there an alternate night that we should choose now rather than?
I would lean toward the following Monday.
Would be the 27th?
Would be the 27th.
Does that stick, still stay within our 90-day window?
I won't be able to be here, but.
Yes, it does.
I think it's the 3rd Monday, is that the one?
Yeah.
They are.
So we could also do the 9th, oh, that's not January.
I think in the past, you're right.
The 13th, we can do the 13th.
I think because the meetings, they fell on a holiday, I believe they used the following Monday, which was the 4th, because there's nothing else planned by the town. There are no other meetings planned on that Monday, the 4th. So you have that as a, as a fallback.
Fourth of?
The fourth Monday.
Oh, the fourth Monday, I see.
Right, so the first Monday has conservation commission, et cetera, et cetera.
I know that way well, because that's where I found holes in the.
Yes, you do, so the 4th is a free date in that respect.
So the 27th could be a?
You could need that day if it was agreeable to the members.
For Martin Luther King Day.
Yeah, due to Martin Luther King Day, we could push that.
And, and for?
Let me quickly see if I can find that. Maybe Michael has done the schedule.
Yeah, I probably won't be able to be here on January 27th.
I'm hesitant to do the 13th, because that gives people less time, not more time. Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to move the other direction, yeah.
But if you make it January 27th, then we're beyond the 90 days.
First.
That's true.
I don't know if we're beyond the 90 days. November 1st.
November 1st.
And does that imply that we are currently have to do a meeting day?
I don't know about that.
November 1st, December 1st.
That's 30 days, 30 days to 90.
60. We're, we're still.
We're still okay.
We're still okay. We're okay, but if it doesn't happen on that meeting, we need to figure something else out.
Well, we might be using that second line in the RSA document there.
Yes. So 27th would be, I mean, it would be.
Unfortunately, the applicant just left, but he'll be notified, I'm assuming, by?
Yes.
Okay. It seems like you guys are in touch.
Yep.
I'm free the 27th, I don't have, so I know you're.
I won't be.
We've got to do it on some day, unfortunately.
So the town of Swansea observes Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, both of them.
Where's President's Day?
Seventeenth is President's.
Seventeenth.
Oh, my goodness. I didn't know we observed President's Day.
But it just doesn't give the dates, it just says it observes the following holidays and closes.
But the 17th is the one right between the 12th and the 22nd, so that's, that's why it's there, right?
That is President's Day. That is President's Day, St. Patrick's.
And then St. Patrick's Day. Let's go for that. See if you hit every single one. It's Easter Monday.
There's only so many.
This is what happens when my calendar is not updated.
Yeah, it's the day after, it's considered Easter Monday, but that's it.
Well, we don't have that day off.
No.
So we're coming. Just like we don't have a St. Patrick's Day off, so we're coming. February, though, if the town's closed, we'll have to bump it.
You bumping it to the 24th?
We're gonna have to.
I can't make that one either. Sorry. I'm on town.
So 24th of February, and the application deadlines will be adjusted to show. Another really quick note about this is that application deadlines are three weeks out instead of 10 days out to be in line with other, our other application deadline dates.
Okay.
So instead of 10 days, they, they now have to submit their application three weeks in advance.
Okay.
Which is a bump by four days.
Will you send me the corrected calendar like you did last time?
Absolutely.
Insert it to the minutes so everybody can see it.
Yep.
So our first, we're moving to the 27th, the January 27th. And February is moving to the following, 24th. And all these anti-Irish people.
We'll have the updated calendar in the minutes.
Yeah, I'm just for my own verification.
And I will post these dates extra early, just so people have some, some time.
Okay.
My kid knows it was the end of school, I should have known.
This is not something we're voting as a board, correct?
Well, this is why I brought it, just so we could catch stuff like this.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it doesn't require a motion or a?
I don't think so.
Vote to, to accept, okay?
I think we're talking about it in that Adam implement, so.
Yep, and it goes on the website.
All right. Any other business to discuss?
Did you, do we have somebody?
Adam, do we have somebody?
We do, yeah, Mr. Joe Parisi.
Yes.
How are you, sir?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. He has expressed an interest in joining as an alternate, so.
Excellent.
Tell us a bit about yourself, your background.
Lived in, owned property in town for three years, moved to town as my residence last year, formerly lived in Chesterfield. Retired, was vice president of engineering at Markham. Here, based on the note that was in the newsletter of this ward needing to be moved and appears as alternates, and that's why I'm here, I bring some applicable experience in. When we moved from Chesterfield, I was serving my 11th year on the planning board and my 3rd year on budget committee. Previously, I also served on ZBA for two years. But I think I, as I said, I've got some applicable experience. I've got the time, busy my retirement, and certainly want to contribute my time and help associate with you too, you know.
I appreciate your interest and your desire. We're always looking for good people to help.
Yeah.
We toe the line here.
I made one meeting.
Yeah, now he's president of the.
I said I made one meeting, you know, you're.
We told you different last week.
Yeah.
Last, last.
And we have one, one vacancy for an alternate, you might be it.
I was hoping my urgently seeking applicant was, was.
Underlined.
Underlined and everything. Yeah.
Takes him into the office.
So you see, committing each of all eight orders?
Again, I served on the total of 15 years on campus, and paid for it and committed commitment.
Awesome. Thank you so much for coming.
And Beverly, it can be my reference as our recording secretary.
For a very short period of time, because Fran talked me into doing something that was not quite what it ended up being. But yes.
It was a different job.
It was a different job, right.
Well, and just from some basic insights of the board, you know, I've seen, we've experienced other zoning boards and other cities and so forth and how they, they run their meetings, but the alternate positions, at least in Swansea, are very much involved in the discussions and so forth, whether or not that alternate is sat in a particular seat or not. So we're very open to discussions, not a sidelined position by any, by any stretch of the imagination. So I find that to be an extremely beneficial aspect, to lean on everyone's experience and knowledge, you know, to discuss these applications. So I really welcome your interest.
Well, that's good to hear because, you know, that's, I attended a few planning board meetings and that didn't seem to be the case. You know, alternates were, were basically public and they weren't, they didn't seem to be interacting as a, as a member of the board. And that's not what I'm used to because I started out in Chesterfield on vote boards as an alternate. And that being engaged is the way to learn.
Exactly, absolutely. I mean, the only thing an alternate would not do in a particular meeting would be voting. That would be the, but up to that point, you know, input, discussions, questions, it's, it's, it's interactive. Any training, any training opportunities, we'll send your way.
And you're obviously seated.
Yeah. Town pays for training, so if there's any NHMA training that you want to go to, we'll send it your way.
Most of that online now or do you have to go to Congress?
Oh, no. Jay, Jay and I just went to one a couple of months ago.
In Congress.
Yeah.
But it, they, there was, there was some option to do it remotely, too. And during COVID, I went to one remotely. And my experience as an alternate was that I was seated almost every time.
Yeah.
So we need alternates.
That happens.
And Pete's only been here for one meeting as, as an alternate, here he is seated, so.
Yeah. But the board's pretty responsive. I mean, most of the members and so forth are, have, are committed to it and, and do show up and come to all the meetings. But, you know, that, there is a position, even though we're talking about the, you know, the dates here, where, you know, life happens. And so we need alternates to fill those positions so that we can do the best we can for the town.
Absolutely.
Well, thanks for coming, Joe.
And his next step is to go to the select board? We'll fill out an application.
His next step is to go to the clerk for an oath of office. I'll send you an email tomorrow.
I've done an application.
Oh.
Not specific to ZBA.
Okay, I'll send you an email tomorrow. The clerk will have an oath of office ready for you maybe on Wednesday.
And that would be for what purpose?
For the alternate position in the ZBA. Alternates are different than regular members in what they require. So all you require is an oath of office with the clerk. You don't need to be voted in.
Does he need, does he need to, to select board to?
Nope.
No.
Nope.
Well, they may be culturally.
Nope, I think that was.
I just go to the town clerk and chief, less is it, I'm a little confused though.
Yeah, the roster of your car, you just ask.
Yeah, you just say you're, you're interested in, I mean, I'll, I'll talk to them tomorrow to make sure that they're ready.
Still has to be sworn in.
Because I was talking to Mike about it when we were doing, doing with Pete's oath of office, they don't have to do anything.
Well, the oath of office is swearing in.
Yeah, sorry, it's, it's not the select board, it's just an oath of office.
Well, that's what I was talking about, sworn in by the.
By the clerk, yeah.
By the clerk, yeah, that's exactly what I was referring to.
Sorry, sorry.
So I don't need to be voted on by this body or the select board?
You still need to be approved by this body.
Yes, but not the select board.
Yeah.
And does that happen in Africa? I'm confused as to the possibility.
I move that we encourage Joe to apply as an alternate for the zoning board of adjustment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, hi.
Thank you, I do.
Your hours.
You usually ask, you know, but what were there?
Uh, tomorrow, you can come tomorrow. Yeah, I think you can get something together pretty quick, so. Uh, afternoon, though. Give them some time. Yeah, I'll send you an email tomorrow morning with some more details.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Yeah, I know, I know the, the swearing process. I wasn't sure of the election process.
Yes, that fills us up. Look at that. This was beyond my hopes and dreams for this ZBA. We have December, and we have all of our alternates.
Yeah, we have our chair and one of the alternates missing tonight, so that would give us three alternates and the five members.
I was expecting to do some heavy recruiting in like February, but this is great. Yeah. Yeah, look at that. Fantastic, well, welcome forward. Looking forward to seeing you on January 27th. Okay.
I'll be away. I was signed in the VP on the, on the 20th, not the 27th.
That's all right, that's all right. That's what we got, Bob.
I mean, it's Pete's most likely going to fill in for me.
All right. Okay, well, thanks, Joe. Got to conclude the service today.
Okay. Any other business that we're?
Not from my office.
Well, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Having the voters that were here surveying our interests, how will they be notified of the change of the meeting?
So we'll do our regular notification process in three public places, the website, and I have their information, so I'm just going to call them. Along with Ms. Liddell, is she here?
No.
No. I, I know, I'm sorry, I keep saying.
It's not necessary.
It's not necessary, I know.
If, if a, if a meeting is, an application is continued, then the, the first notice stands. Especially if the people have come to the meeting, they know that the meeting is continued and it's publicized.
But they don't know when it's continued, by the way.
Yeah, they do, they do.
But we just changed the date. They were here, they left before.
Yeah, so, so Snow is also going to be, I'm going to call them separately because I feel bad.
Procedurally.
Procedurally, I'm talking about the fact that if an application is continued, you do not have to send out all the first notices like you did the first time.
Yeah, so legally, we don't need to do notices again, but we still need.
We do, because we just changed the date.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, because we changed the date.
Right, but that's the only reason.
Yes. But if it was a regularly scheduled. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So a motion has been made to adjourn. Is there a second? It's been second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.